Hey, everybody. Ready? Welcome, everyone, to the City Council Work Session for February 10th. And just to let you know, I spent an hour and a half before coming to this meeting in the dentist's chair, so if I seem a little dingy, that might be the reason why. Or my mouth does funny things, or something like that. Anyway, we are -- on the agenda today, it says council reports and items are first, but we're pushing them to the end of the meeting instead of at the beginning because Councilor Polling has to go to work, and we want to have him here for as much of this discussion as we possibly can. And then I just want to say, I -- this is an important discussion today, and I think that I just want to express my appreciation to the city manager and staff, because they've worked so diligently to listen to us and to put forward the things that we've suggested as a council, and to try to find ways and solutions for being able to fund or discuss how we would fund the things that you are interested in having happen in this community. And so, when I say that broadly, I realize that each -- all eight of you may have some of this that you're more fond of than others, but all of these things are things that have come forward from the council as a whole for us to consider and try to move on, and more importantly, for the community, and try to come to some -- I actually thought the registered guard article was pretty good. And the essence of that was that here's what we're trying to work on is a more holistic approach of development and public safety, and moving a lot of the things that we think can make our community better. And with that, I'm going to ask the city manager to lead us through this conversation.
Thank you very much, Mayor. And as you suggested, this is a part of an ongoing conversation that we really started late last summer, last summer, around downtown, and we've gone through some discussions around strategies, projects, and now we'll be talking more specifically about projects and tools. I'll be giving a short presentation, and then what I would suggest, if possible, is to actually put motion out early before the discussion. I know Councilor Polling has a timing issue with that, and have the discussion about that and amendments as we go from there. And the other piece is, is I have amended my motion to incorporate Allen's comments. He had two concerns around the cameras, so we've incorporated that, also about bringing back to you analysis around geo bonds and levies. And so, I've incorporated that into a modified motion, which I've given to Mike to take a look at. So, let's get started on this. Just remember, from the 30,000-foot flyover level, as we've gone through Eugene counts, some of the things that are starting to emerge from those -- that data and those conversations are really important, the importance around jobs, public safety, and downtown. And so, as we work through the work session today, we're continuing to try to focus on those three elements. You've seen this before, the downtown strategies that you've talked about and asked us to continue to move forward are these four, with a real importance of vibrant downtown, urban vitality, as well as boosting the local economy. Just as a reminder, the parking piece, we are not talking about today. That will be coming back to you in a work session later on this month, but we will be talking about safety, jobs redevelopment, and attractions and amenities. Again, you've seen this before. These are the projects that we have talked about moving forward. The ones we will not be talking about today are the parking improvements. Once again, we'll be having that discussion later on. The Bean Project, we've had plenty of discussions. We're moving forward on that. They're moving forward on that, and so, we're not re-discussing that piece, but the others we will have some conversation about. Want to talk about public safety. At work session several weeks ago, there were some elements on the short-term plan that you asked us to begin moving forward on, and so, we are moving forward on these particular ones. Talked about coordinating Umbrella to research, review around ordinance around fortified wine and malt liquor, to have a -- to bring the exclusion ordinance review sooner rather than later. There was a request, and we're implementing the downtown work crews and using council contingency dollars to implement that now, so we're moving forward on that. We also talked about discussion of vacant spaces downtown being included in the downtown assessments through DEI, so we're pursuing, looking at that, and eventually we'll come back to council with some ordinance changes on that. And then, the last one was this automated behavior crime reporting and cameras. Part of the discussion we said, and what council asked of us, which we'll reinforce today as part of Allen's motion, is until we have the policies and the procedures and all in place, those need to come back to council before we move forward on that particular item. So, of course, we will do that. With regard to public safety or safety downtown, today's recommendation, these are the ones that you've seen before, so there's nothing new on these recommendations, adding additional police staff, officers, as well as a sergeant and an analyst, having additional lighting in places in downtown, extending that work crew, not just one time, but extending it on for multiple years, adding 10 more jail beds, and then enhancing cahoots services. So, we've talked about those. The total, 1.1 million of ongoing costs and 200,000 of one-time costs. And so...
2.1.
What did I say?
1.1.
It's already gone up to 2.1 since I mentioned that. That's a -- the economy's back in good shape.
Now, 2.2.
Yeah, that's right. Let's keep moving quickly. So, our recommended funding package includes these items. I'm going to talk a little bit more in detail about each of them. One is to use some existing urban renewal dollars for some of the one-time costs, like lighting, using existing telecom dollars to -- for some of the technology that we've talked about, automated crime reporting, new urban renewal related, and we're going to talk more about urban renewal here in just a minute, HSC add and repurpose. I'm going to talk more about some detail in there, because I know in the last couple of days, there's been a little bit of confusion around that. Working and negotiating with Springfield for jail beds, and part of what we've begun the conversations, as we're talking about intergovernmental agreements, we're talking to them about actually buying Springfield jail beds, or at least fulfilling perhaps half of our 10 jail bed requirement with Springfield jail beds. The other piece that we're trying to do is, there may be an opportunity to exchange jail beds for some other services that they may want around fire training, and so, we're working with them on that particular thing to go forward. We're also repurposing a piece of the EPD's current budget to bring downtown as a high priority and property crime as a high priority, and so, there's some efficiencies and some things that the chief is looking at, at repurposing a couple hundred thousand of his existing budget to refocus. We've talked about including vacant properties in the downtown service district, and then expanding the downtown service district with a possible fee increase, but the importance about expanding it is, as the chief talked about before, as he focuses energy in more the core downtown, what we don't want to have happen is just having now some of that activity spread into surrounding neighborhoods or closer in towards the university, and so, we want to expand that district. And so, really, his -- the sphere of influence around this is really beyond just purely the downtown, and we'll start moving into areas around the downtown to ensure we're dealing with those kinds of things. So, these are what our recommended funding package is to get to that 2.1 of ongoing and the 200,000 of one time. And let me talk about the HSC briefly, to make sure that we're...
Say what HSC is.
The Human Services Commission through the Lane County. In FY10, the budget that the council approved was allocating, undesignedated, $1,350,000. What this means is, is we transfer that amount of money over to HSC, and HSC chooses how to distribute those dollars. And you'll see in the next couple of slides, my recommendation has no impact on that. The recommendation will continue to be, transfer 1.035 million dollars over to the HSC County, undesignedated, no difference than we've always done before. That money, that amount may change, because in the past, sometimes we'll increase it by CPI and things like that, so that could change that way. We also transfer, in FY10, $450,000 of designated dollars, and that's just similar to United Way, in the sense that some of the United Way dollars are undesignedated, some are designated. So, there are some specific agencies over the years that the councils have chosen to actually give money to. The amount of money has changed over the last 10 years or so that we've done. Back in FY00, there was $36,000 that was designated dollars. In FY10, it's close to $450,000. The agencies have changed to that period of time. There was only a Looking Glass that has received dollars consistently of this HSC designated dollars through that time period, and that has been $36,000 per year, each of those FYs. Now, there's one other piece of other designated that does not go through HSC, and those -- and it's 345,000 currently. Some of that is cahoots, some of that is, you know, the HIV Alliance has received dollars through the years, so there are a couple other of those agencies. So, the total amount of those dollars that we've spent in FY10 is 1.8 million dollars. The proposal for FY11, the undesignedated is exactly the same, no change. We give them the $1,350,000. They choose how to allocate that. The HSC designated, we would propose $450,000. Now, the council may choose which agencies to give that to, but the total amount, we're not suggesting changes. The other designated, again, the council may choose where that money goes. We're not suggesting any changes to that. But we are then suggesting infusing one-time half a million dollars of additional dollars into this safety net, particularly for downtown and beyond. And the reason why I say beyond, because a portion of that would be for additional cahoots service, which is not just strictly a downtown service. So, actually, in FY11, we're proposing additional half million into the system, and particularly in this day and age with the recession, actually provide some additional services. And in FY12 and beyond, again, the allocated HSC undesignedated amount, not suggesting we change anything. It's $1,350,000, not including a CPI, so that may change a little bit. The safety net would remain at a half a million. The one thing is, then, the other designated piece, we would suggest becomes 300,000. So, that 1.8 is the same amount of dollars. It's just being allocated potentially to different agencies with an emphasis on the downtown, the safety net for downtown. Then what we would say is, is as other one-time annual carryover money becomes available, we can, the council can choose to allocate up to an additional, any amount you want, but we'd suggest up to an additional half a million for additional services. So, that's what the piece that we're talking about with that. So, now, let's talk a little bit more about some of the other projects. So, that's the downtown public safety piece. LCC, you know where that is. Here's some outcomes around. We're trying to work towards LCC. Great project. I know Mary Spielie has talked to most or all of you about the particular project. One of the things that we're excited about is they're also proposing housing as part of her project. She's talked about a minimum of 200 beds. The analysis, market analysis feasibility shows more than that, but that's at least 200 beds of housing for downtown, which is great, as well as all the other benefits that come along with job creation during the construction phase, as well as ongoing new jobs in the downtown core. So, it fits that jobs, education, economic development. VA clinic, we've talked about as a project you wanted to move forward. This is the outcomes for that. The piece on the VA clinic, which we'll talk a little bit more about, is, we don't know specifically, one, whether they're going to come to this site. The RFP is current, or excuse me, the VA is currently evaluating RFPs. This site is one of those that was submitted by Peace Health, so we don't know what the needs or requirements are on that yet. Another one that we've talked about is Farmer's Market. As we know, the Farmer's Market, along with the Saturday Market, are a huge engine for downtown during parts of the year, particularly on the weekends, but also during the week, and brings a lot of people down here, draws great attraction, supports our sustainability goals around local food, some of those kinds of things. Green infrastructure is another project that we think is a good one to pursue, and really what this is, is helping a lot of the existing businesses downtown for weatherization, energy upgrades. Eventually, there could be some steam conversion that's going to be needed, some of those kinds of things, and in this case, we're suggesting we're pursuing grant funds around that. Business assistance and housing. We have an existing loan program that we would want to continue with that. That really does talk a lot about jobs and filling spaces and providing some gap financing. So, let's talk just briefly about the urban renewal proposal that I'm bringing to you today. We're trying to be very focused. I've talked and listened to a lot of people in the community about some of their real concerns with the current urban renewal district as it's set up. As you'll see in AIS, in an initial draft of an amendment, we have essentially eliminated over half of the current verbiage in that, to try to move away from any -- to make sure it's much more focused, much clearer around what it is we're trying to accomplish. So, our recommendation would be that the next round of urban renewal would be for these four projects only. Public safety, the way that would work, if you remember with a couple slides before, we would use the urban renewal dollars, approximately $4.8 million of urban renewal dollars, to pay off the debt service on the parking garage, the West Broadway parking garage. What that would do is free up approximately $750,000 of parking fund dollars, which are really general fund dollars, can be viewed as general fund dollars, which then could be used to help support the downtown public safety program. So, what we're going to be doing is using one-time dollars. The result would be receiving ongoing dollars that could be used then to help pay for officers in the downtown or any other piece of the plan that we choose. The second project would be the LCC project, helping that go forward, and we would suggest up to about $8 million. We're still negotiating through all of that with Mary, and would expect to have all that closed up before final decisions would have to be made on the urban renewal district. Farmer's Market include a half a million dollars for improvements in the Farmer's Market to try to help expand their footprint, as well as other block improvements. And the last one is the VA clinic. What we've talked about there is having that in the queue, so if the VA chooses to come down, we can then include that into the district. If they choose not to come to that site, then that would not be a part of the district or the plan.
Would it be same with LCC? For some reason, LCC filtered.
Right. If for some reason they filter, we would not include that, yes. So, the VA clinic, what we don't know is, what is a dollar amount that's appropriate right now for that, because there's a little bit of on the early stage. The other pieces is the URA board, that's you as the council, must approve each project as we're going forward. We would propose setting up a community review panel similar to that was set up as part of the street bond project to go through the finances. And then, finally, my proposal is, is that the district ends after the projects are completed. Now, I have heard some feedback from people, a couple people in the community that have said the district should be, continue to extend after that. That's not my recommendation, but what I would encourage people is that if, you know, there will be a public hearing on this, and so, if people do want to comment and provide feedback to the council, that'd be an appropriate time to provide feedback on council, and ultimately, you'll get to choose on how you want to handle this. Overall impact, we're talking about safety, we're talking about jobs, we're talking about economic development, urban vitality, et cetera. Just quickly, in the next steps, parking work session is February 17th, so that's why I've chosen not to talk about that here. There'll be a whole lot more discussion on that. On February 22nd, we plan to come back with specifics around LCC. And March is when you would actually be initiating the action to move an urban renewal district forward. Action you take today does not initiate that. What you would be telling us today is, go and prepare the appropriate documentation, given these conditions, bring those back to us in the work session. At that time, then you would actually be taking formal action to initiate a 100-day process, a public process, the hearing process, et cetera, for that. And then, we would be coming back later this spring with a downtown service district ordinance that deals with vacant properties, et cetera, and expanding the district. The FY budget process will kick off, well, started already, but mainly in end of April and May and June is when you'll be making final decisions on some of these kinds of things if you choose to move forward. So, for that, we're available for questions.
Would you do your hard...
Yeah, we're trying to...
Mike, did you want to make a friend?
Yeah. Make a thank you.
I appreciate all the hard work there that's gone into this, and I certainly appreciate, I've made comments over time, a couple of these pieces that I have some concerns about. So, I was very happy that Allen brought them up again in an email, and that some other people have mentioned them, and that the manager and the attorney have given us a very lengthy motion here, but I think addresses all these pieces that we can deconstruct. So, I'm just going to read it in, and then we can start talking about the pieces. Regarding the downtown safety initiative, point number one, move to use $100,000 of one-time existing urban renewal dollars to purchase and install additional lighting downtown, and $100,000 of one-time dollars, half from telecom and half from existing urban renewal, to purchase automated behavior crime reporting software and cameras, but only after the council approves the manager's plan for number, location, use, and ongoing costs of the cameras, after considering the camera's expected effectiveness in deterring crime. Point B, pursue use of Springfield jail beds in exchange for Springfield's use of Eugene's fire training center. Point C, include in the manager's proposed FY11 budget, $500,000 of one-time dollars for the Human Services Commission, and repurpose $500,000 of the city's HSC contribution for partial funding of the downtown safety initiative, and including additional services like cahoots. Point D, present to the Urban Renewal Agency Board for its review, a proposed amendment to the downtown urban renewal plan that would, one, restrict the use of tax increment funds and increase the spending limit to pay for the Broadway Place garage debt, thereby freeing up funds for additional police officers downtown, and, two, three other projects specified in the motion below, and, two, then, terminate the downtown urban renewal district as soon as the projects are paid for or sufficient funds are collected to fund those projects. Item E, bring back to council this spring a proposed ordinance requiring vacant properties to pay downtown service district fees, and, F, work with downtown Eugene Incorporated and the Chamber of Commerce on partnerships and other funding strategies with a goal of achieving $350,000 in revenue. Point two, include the proposed downtown Lane Community College development at 10th and Charnelton, $8 million as part of the proposed urban renewal plan amendment. Point three, include as part of the proposed urban plan amendment, an additional $500,000 for improvements to the park blocks to enhance that area for the Farmer's Market. Point four, if the VA purposes pursues Peace Health's planned street site for a new VA clinic, include the VA clinic as part of the proposed urban renewal plan amendment. Point five, pursue additional grant opportunities for steam conversion and electric vehicle charging stations, and finally, point six, present to the council at the same time that the manager brings forward a draft amendment to the UR, to the urban renewal plan, an analysis of both a local option levy and a general obligation bond, instead of tax increment financing, to fund the specified projects.
Can you move? Is there a second?
A second for discussion, and then I'm in the queue, I think.
Move second.
Mayor, if I can just point out, for the council's benefit and the public, what's changed between what Mike just read and what's on your agenda is the italicized stuff, which is in 1A, at the end of 1A, related to the cameras, and what's in 6. Everything else is the same as what's on the printed agenda. I'd like to speak to it in queue and camera.
Betty?
Okay. I moved to substitute the motion which you have before me, and I can read all of this if you want me to. It is to separate that motion, the A, B, C, D, E, and F, into separate motions, which I've requested ahead of time, and, well, I'll see if I got a second.
Second.
Do you want me to, okay, I've got the second.
Moved and seconded.
Do you want me to read it all?
Obviously, it includes the things that were just read.
Yeah, only they would become 1, 2, 3, 4, instead of A, B, C.
So, maybe the motion is to separate. It's a motion to separate.
Well, the motion, I think, Betty, is just motion number one, which is to substitute for everything Mike just read, the first part of what Mike just read. So, the motion that you just made is to take your motion one, substitute that for what Mike just read.
Can she just move to separate?
Should we just separate them all?
Separate them all.
Then I need to make separate motions for all these, is that right?
To separate.
Yes, but then you have to decide what you're actually separating, so that's why it was prepared this way. So, you vote on motion one, and then if that passes, then someone would read motion two, and then motion three, and motion four. So, you do them all sequentially.
Subsequent motion.
So, right now, you have on the table Betty's request to, in essence, separate each piece.
Are you satisfied with that? Yes. Well, not really, but I'm not satisfied, actually, that we didn't get this as a revised agenda, since I requested it some time ago, and I don't like the push to vote for a package if you want to vote for one part of it, and then being forced to vote against things I'd really like to vote for, because they're bundled together with other things. So, I, so this just gives, that we would now be voting on motion one, which is...
Be amended.
1A.
You already go off.
I moved to amend to make all of these parts separate motions.
And you have a second.
I second it.
Second. She doesn't want to do it the way you suggested. All right, so, all those in favor, please indicate. 1, 2, 3, 4. Was it 4?
4.
2, 3, 4. Okay. And those in opposition? 1, 2, 3, 4. I guess I will vote for the separation, so you can address them separately. So, you're going to start with a...
Okay. The first one is to one-time dollars for crime reporting and so forth. I think that one sounds okay if we postpone the camera part, which we decided to do. So, I'm willing to vote on that now.
So, what's the motion?
If I can clarify, because the motion that was just approved was to take Mike's motion and separate, then what, right now, you're discussing is 1A, which includes the camera piece.
Yes. But it also includes the information of how it would be dealt with by council approval.
Right. So, you're looking at the modified motion that was just handed out, and you're, right now, you're talking about 1A.
And I believe what Betty just said was, yes, she understands that, and she thinks that's fine.
Okay.
So, you're putting that out there, so that's your motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded.
Mayor, you don't have to do that, because the council...
It's all there.
It's all there, so you're just going to go through them now, one at a time. So, 1A is now on the table, and that's what you're...
All right. 1A is on the table, discussion. George?
Yeah, I, I'll support this the way that it's worded, but I have really serious concerns about seeking up surveillance cameras all around town. That really bothers me, and I need to know exactly where they would go, who they're going to be targeting, are they going to move around. I, I'm real nervous about this one. I kind of hate to see us go down that road. They could be useful. I'm willing to look at it, but I'm real nervous about this one. one. But I will support, I will support this motion, but I need a lot more facts before I can support any final motion about security cameras going anywhere.
Yeah, I've got Mike and Alan in the queue. Mike?
Yeah, this, this was the one with the additional language there that made me feel at least comfortable moving forward to come back with some specific information. But this, as well as the urban renewal piece, were the ones that gave me pause. The privacy issues involved, I'm not exactly sure how to reconcile the things we don't know that will happen in this particular opportunity. So, I'm gonna need a lot more information, too. It's gonna need to be pretty in-depth, and I feel very much like George does on this one.
Alan?
I just ditto the previous two comments. I have great concerns, which is why I suggested these, this amendment, and thank the city manager for putting into the, to the recommendation. I think it'll, we'll get a clearer idea of what we're trying to do here, and with more specificity around this plan.
So, it's, in the motion is the fact that you will get to get all that information, and you will be able to consider it. So, no one else in the queue on this one?
Well, I, I do agree, cameras can be very dangerous, actually, that, like, a snooping thing, but, but as it's worded, I will vote for it.
All right. Our-
Mayor, before, between the time that you bring back your plan, if we approve this motion, can the chief still go ahead and buy the automated behavior crime reporting software?
Yes, I don't hear any concern with that.
All right, good, thank you.
All right, all those in favor of item 1A? A in favor and none in opposition, it passes. We're on to B, which is the pursue the use of-
Which is now 2.
It's now 2.
2, excuse me. We're on to 2.
Would you like me to remake each one of these?
No, Mayor, it is 1B.
1B, thank you.
Because you took the motion and you separated it, so it's 1B.
Oh, okay.
Thank you for that.
Would you like me to make each of these?
No, they said we don't need to do this.
It's on the table.
So, you, now, is 1B pursue use of Springfield jail beds in exchange for Springfield's use of Eugene's fire training center. Discussion? Andrea, and then George.
I just, would this be a forever kind of thing, or is it just, are we gonna put a sunset on this? I mean, because this, I just feel like this is something that could morph into something else, and I just have a little bit of concern, I'm gonna support it, but I just would like to make sure that we look at, is it, you know, is there gonna be a lifeline of this, or is it gonna be an opportunity, or do we see at some point, we're gonna be able to fund our own jail beds and not need to have to trade those things, or, I just wanted to have more conversation about it.
The intent would be is to provide an ongoing jail bed capacity. Now, if in the future, there's a different way of providing that, absolutely, we can revisit that. The intent here is that, that we need those jail beds as part of the program, and this is a way to secure those as we're moving forward. So, yes, absolutely, if we can revisit it as circumstances change in the future.
Yeah, I've got George and then Alan.
And my question or comment was along the same lines, do we want to make it so restrictive that that's the only discussion that you can have, is in exchange for the use of the fire training center? Would it be better to say, to include, as opposed to make it a-
That would be fine, yeah, that makes it more flexible, so that'd be helpful.
That would be a friendly? Accepted.
All right, everybody okay with that? All right, so can I get the language of that, pursue Springfield jail beds in exchange for, how do you want?
To include the exchange for, so it, it doesn't only say that that would be the-
To include the exchange for, okay, all right. Anybody else in the queue? Alan?
So, maybe, Mr. City Manager, can you clarify what you believe pursue means?
Negotiate.
Coordinate with. Remember part of what- That you bring it back to council once you negotiated it, and, not to turn to the legal advice, but remember part of what we're, we're looking at doing is an IGA agreement with Springfield for some different fire services. One of those that's been talked about is training, and so they have expressed an interest in using our second and chamber training facility, and so, this idea is that they may be able to use that training facility, and we're able to provide beds for that, and that would be a part of an IGA. The IGA, I don't know, you'd have to ask the, or answer the question about, does that come back?
Just to clarify that, to me, pursue means go investigate and negotiate, does it mean execute?
Execute.
Thank you.
If the council wouldn't want the city manager to, I mean, hypothetically speaking, if Springfield said, "We would be happy to let you use five jail beds in exchange for our use, specified use of Eugene's fire training facility," and you don't want the manager to be able to do that without coming back to the council, then we should change this to say, "Explore and bring back to the council." Right now, the city manager can contract with Springfield for jail beds, if you have appropriated the funds. What this notion is, is rather than transfer dollars to Springfield, maybe Springfield wants something that Eugene has, so there is no exchange. It's, it's just sort of the merger, quote, merger discussions expanded. If you don't want the manager to do that, then you should amend this to say, "Review and bring back to the council."
I, I support this idea, and I think it's a very good one, and I hope it works, but I would like to see what the deal is, so, would you accept that as a friendly amendment, "Explore and bring back to council for approval"?
No. No, sorry.
Then I move to amend.
Second.
Moved in seconded. Further discussion? All, yes, Chris?
Yes, quickly. The only thing I want to check into is what is usual and typical with regard to the authority of the city manager to execute contracts. And it's not that I necessarily have a preference one way or the other, I, I just want to know what, I don't want to start impinging too much into what's your usual authority for things, even though I would be interested in knowing if you do it, and I would love to have a report back if you plan to do it, but I don't know if I really need to exercise authority over it, so, can you kind of fill me in on what that is?
The, the city manager or his designees execute probably literally hundreds of contracts a year, that never come to the council. The council appropriates the funds, you say, "Go try to get these services," and then the manager has the appropriation authority, and under the charter goes and negotiates contracts, that doesn't come back to the council. He can only do something within the authority that's granted, typically with respect to contracts, that has, has the council appropriated the dollars for him to spend. The kinds of IGAs that come back generally are ones either involving the sale of real estate, where the manager doesn't have the authority to go sell real estate without the council's approval, or it's gonna be a, some kind of IGA that involves governmental powers, really, more the council and Springfield council or Lane County commissioners that are doing something. This is, I mean, if you had said, if this was, go pursue or go purchase five jail beds from Springfield, the contract for doing that would not come back to the council, any more than the contract to purchase jail beds with Lane County would come back to the council. You would decide to do it, and appropriate money for it, but then the manager would go negotiate it and sign it without bringing it back to the council.
So, my, what I think the legitimate interest here is, not so much that we have the signing authority on it, but that we remain informed, so that we know if, if such a thing happens. I think what we want to avoid is where something like this took place and we never hear about it. We don't know that it happened. And so, if this amendment were to fail, I would hope that if the existing language remains in place, that implicit in that is, you'll let us know what the terms are, and you'll inform us as to what the conditions are, and that that is to be executed, so we are at least aware of it.
Absolutely, it would be with any of the other IGA agreements that we would work out, where Springfield's some could be as minor as who actually does some, some administrative duty. Of course, we would be happy to bring all of that back, as, inform you of what's going on.
George?
I really can't support, support this. I, unamend it. I, I think that we have to be able to approve or disapprove of any kind of a, of an arrangement. I mean, we're talking about jail beds, we're talking about use of our, our fire station training facilities, where this is gonna blend into future discussions with Springfield about possible merger of the fire services. I just, I don't know. I think we need to be able to, to approve anything that the manager comes up with.
You know, other agencies currently use our training facility over there, so we, we coordinate with them all the time for training, not just there, but other kinds of training facilities. And so, from just a purely pragmatic standpoint, it would be extremely difficult to come back to the council every time we wanted to try to approve a contract or anything. I think, one, you wouldn't, at some point, you wouldn't want that. Two, it just, it just makes it really difficult to do business, and so I have a caution around that.
George, you have more you want to say?
Well, I, yeah, I, I agree. I don't, I don't expect every, every single contract to come, to come into our purview, but I mean, this is, this is a big deal. This is like our downtown safety initiative, this is beds at Springfield, not even in Eugene, not even at the county jail. I think it's, this is, I see this as quite a bit different from the average run of contract, and, let's face it, it's a significant amount of money, too. Couple hundred thousand dollars, probably, at least, equivalent thereof, so I, I just, I feel like we should be able to sign in on it, that's all.
Mike?
Last month, please correct me if I'm wrong, court administrator and the judge decided to change the number of beds in our agreement that we buy from the county, from 15 to 14, and then back again, right? Because they already have the authority to do that, and I see this as very parallel. They have the capacity and the authority to do that already, and if Alan's friendly actually had, if it had said, "Do and, and report back," I would have accepted that one, if that's what you meant to say.
No. I, I see what happened.
Andrea?
Thank you. I just want a memo. I just wanted to know how it's being done, and if there's a dollar amount attached, that being used, you know, I know that everybody in Lane County comes to Second and Chambers. I drive by there four, five times, six, seven times a day, I can't say how much I drive, but, and I see cars there from Sunnysafe Fire, I see cars there from Albany, and I see cars there from all over the area, so they're using it anyway, and if we can get something back from them, I do have some concerns, like I said, and I, you know, just want a memo back to see how it all works out, but I, I don't plan to support the motion.
George?
Okay, now, this will just be my last point. I mean, I don't even understand why this is on our list, then. Why, why was this even brought to us if we can't give our input about the final outcome? It shouldn't even be on here, if it's just no big thing, like, like I'm hearing from people, and so why, why, why are we even having this conversation? If we're having a conversation, I think we should be able to approve of, like, we're going to approve all these other things, approve or not, and this is on the list of all other things that we're going to be approving or not, and I don't understand why this is different, that's, that's all I'm saying. If it's different, it shouldn't even be on the list, perhaps.
I think, just real quickly, the, the reason why it's on the list, what we wanted to try to do is to say, "Here's the program for downtown public safety, here's our, our recommended package for financing them, and in this case, if you didn't want us to pursue jail beds in Springfield, this would be the right time to say that." That's different than, because what you're saying here is, yes, we think that could be a good idea, go forth and do great things, try to come up with the best deal you can, let us know what happens. If you don't want us to have jail beds in Springfield, that would be a good policy call to make, but once you say yes, then I think our job is to operationalize that and make that happen. So, that's why it's on there.
Chris and then Alan.
Yeah, I think that's an important point. I mean, it really does get to the fact that we actually are making a decision on it, we're doing it right now. I mean, the fact that it's on here, we're voting on it, is the decision, and to me, it's the decision at the appropriate altitude, at the policy level. We're saying, as a matter of policy, we want you to see if you can make this happen. How many dollars it costs, and whether they have white sheets or pink sheets, or whether it's this big or that big, or how many it is, is more operational, and I would like to be informed about it, but I don't want to be involved in the, in the negotiation or the authorizing at that level. But I think it's absolutely appropriate for us to give you direction today, as to whether we're interested in having you pursue it or not, and so, a vote yes or no on this is the instruction to you on whether or not to do it. So, we are actually, I think, exercising exactly that level of control, at exactly the right time, and that's why today's the day to talk about it and do it.
Alan?
What if Springfield says no? What are you gonna do?
What we all have to do is find a different way to provide jail beds, and that may involve coming back to the council and saying, "We want to pursue a different option for jail beds," so.
So, this direction is, is a swap. This, to include the use of the training center, and it, it doesn't envision us buying a whole bunch of jail beds.
The way I, I take this-
That would be a different-
And that's a little bit where I think George was getting at, was including the jail beds. Our intent is, is to try to negotiate with Springfield for a number of jail beds, up to 10, as a, as part of the, supportive of our package. Partly, we think they're, they're maybe cheaper, and they just may be a more efficient way of pursuing that. If it turns out that they really aren't cheaper, then we're not gonna want to buy that. The reason why we talked about swapping is, one option is we buy jail beds, and then they buy training time from us. Well, rather than going through the passing dollars back and forth, one option is that you actually agree to swap the services, that's why we say swap. If it turns out that we buy them and they buy training from us, that still works, and I think it's still within the intent of trying to include jail beds as part of the whole package, so.
What I worry about in this, the way that this, this is worded, is that that deal doesn't end up working out, and, I don't know, what would the price tag be for 10 beds? So, we're basically approving a motion without knowing the price tag, and that would be a concern.
The price tag-
The price tag is zero, so that-
Right, the price tag that we do, that we talk about is the 2.1 and the 200,000 of one-time money. I mean, that's the price tag for the package. Now, yeah, so if, if, if part of what you want to say is that the whole package doesn't go above that, then, I mean, that, that sets the price tag for that, too, but I, but I think that's the intent.
Betty?
Well, I think this is a policy decision that shouldn't be made that, this quickly. I think it needs more discussion. That's the problem with trying to do all of these things in a very short time, in my opinion. I think we need to think more about possible consequences of doing it, and it is, and dealing with, well, it's just something we need to think about, we need more information we need to think about. But if we take Alan's amendment, I'll vote for that.
All right, I think we're ready to vote on Alan's amendment. All those in favor, please indicate. 3.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry.
In opposition?
Getting confused.
In opposition? Chris?
There you go. Go ahead.
All right, 5. It does not pass, now we're back to the main motion. All those in favor? 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 in opposition. 1, 2, 3, it passes.
Mayor?
Yes.
So, two comments. One, I favor this idea, so I didn't like the specifics of how it's done, but I favor the idea. The second one is, is that when we get all this done at the end, I think, I mean, there's no motion in here about how much all this is gonna cost, so I think we need to address that at the end.
And we're gonna go to C now, which is include in the manager's proposed FY 11 budget, $500,000 of one-time dollars for the human services commission, and repurpose $500,000 of the city's human service commission contribution for partial funding of the downtown safety initiative, including additional services like cahoots.
And this, Mayor, is what I described on the, on the screen, is the intent of this.
With the discussion that we've been having the last couple days.
Right.
Right. Discussion? Alan?
So, if I understand this right, from the slides that you did, Mr. City Manager, the current $185,000 that we spent on HSC would continue beyond 2012, to 2012 and beyond, and, and in the short term, we're enhancing it by $500,000 at 2.325, and that that would continue beyond 2005 if we can find money to do one-time to monies to allocate towards that additional $500,000. If we didn't do that, then we'd still be at the same place we are today.
Let me just repeat it back to make sure I understood.
Good, because I said that before.
Today, it's a total of 1.8 this year. Next year, we would add an additional $500,000. In 12 and beyond, the minimum would still be 1.8. Additional dollars may be allocated based on, ultimately, the, the carryover of one-time money to bump that up beyond 1.8, but the intent would- But the intent with this is that the minimum's 1.8, plus if there's any other CPI that the Budget Committee and the council approves as a part of that discussion.
Okay. Does that seem like, it's like a hold harmless plan?
It's a hold harmless.
With a, with a bump in the short term.
Right. The one piece is, is that, as I mentioned, the, the agencies that get funded change every year anyhow, and this would emphasize that the, the safety net for downtown plus takes, is a priority for those agencies at that. There's still then additional dollars to get up to the 1.8 for other agency distributions. So, I just want to make sure that that's, that makes sense? So, it's held harmless dollar-wise, it's held harmless going forward.
Right. Although...
A bump up in FY11.
Right. And, and, but the 500,000 we directed to downtown, things like Safe and Sound.
Right. Yeah, the, the mix of agencies could be different than, than in the past, but that's a year-to-year decision anyhow that the council makes. Does that make sense?
Alan?
Yep. I'm okay with this.
George?
So, who, what, once, the HRC will make the decision on how this, this...
HSC.
I mean, HRC. They'll, they'll make the decision.
They make a decision, the, what we transfer is undesigned, it is up to the HSC to decide how they choose to do that. Just like it is now, nothing changes without.
Okay. All right. I think we're ready to vote on that one. All those in favor? Eight in favor and none in opposition, it passes. We're on to D. D is present to the Urban Renewal Agency Board for its review, a proposed amendment to the downtown urban renewal plan that would, one, restrict the use of tax increment funds and increase the spending limit to pay for the Broadway Place Garage's debt, thereby freeing up funds for additional police officers downtown, and three other projects specified in this motion below, and to terminate the downtown urban renewal district as soon as the projects are paid for, or sufficient funds are collected to fund these, those projects. Glenn?
Mayor, if I could both clarify one thing and then suggest with unanimous consent of the council in addition, the clarification is, if you approve 1D, you are not automatically approving, including LCC, Parks, well, Farmers Market, or the VA. You'll still need to vote on 2, 3, and 4. And then my suggestion for you, but you need unanimous consent to do this, is to take number 6 and move it up to D, so that D, at the end of D, you would add the words, "In addition," as part of the motion now you're voting on.
Number 6.
And 6.
Okay.
In addition to, at the same time.
And do I, um...
That was Gavin.
I, I'm going to need you to vote, I think, do we need to vote on that?
Well, you can just ask if anybody objects.
Does anybody object to that?
Okay. So, now, 1D includes with 6.
All right. All right. All right. So, now, I've got Mike.
Thank you. That's, that was going to be my proposal there as well.
So, you're done?
As a matter of fact, no, by a long shot. One of the, I got an interesting email today about, and I understand the concern. The part for me here that I, I want to see this broken out, the sub-part, the, the language in 6, is because I want to understand as clearly as is possible the impact on other districts, other municipalities, and other affected government bodies in as specific a way as is possible to do. But number two, there's a part of the language here that talks about the intent of what to do with the district at some future point. And I can understand the point that that kind of obligates a future council. Can you speak to that?
If the motion passes, what would get presented to you, whenever it was in, in March, would be a draft urban renewal plan amendment that would include language that says, "It's limited money, tax increment funds can be spent only on these four projects, assuming VA's included," and that once funds, tax increment funds are accumulated, to pay for those projects, that tax increment funding would cease. A future council still theoretically would have the potential to amend the plan, just like in the past, I can't remember how many years ago it was, the council decided urban renewal downtown would continue, but only to pay for the library. A later council then said, "Well, we'd also like it to pay for a couple other things." So, a council, a future council always has the authority to amend the plan, you can't change that, but language can be added into the urban renewal plan, and if this passes, it will be there that says, "These are the only projects," and are, any, any amendment that a future council would want to do would be very difficult to accomplish, but a future council would have the legal authority to do it.
Well, I, I would, I appreciate that, and I would say, we're, we're kind of doing that, as in '98, we did a similar thing with, and I'm, I'm not a fan of urban renewal, but I understand the specific points here. I'm going to be really interested to see its effect on other folks, especially at this time, but...
And if I could...
I'm certainly willing to push this forward to see what all the information is.
One of the other things that will be very different about this than what happened with the, when the library was done, is that as you could see from what was attached as a, just sort of a preliminary draft, what we'd actually do is take out all of the other language in the plan. So, this plan really was limited, would be limited to these four projects. If a future council wanted to try to expand the uses, it would be a very significant urban renewal plan amendment that the council would need to process.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, I've got George, and then Betty, and then Alan, and then Jennifer. George?
Well, you, you just put it in a nutshell. We, about the supposed immutability of the plan amendment that we're proposing, there's no such thing. You, the, the current plan has been changed three or four times. It was supposed to end after the library. Now, we're, now, we're going to do this. We're a legislating body, and future councils, advised by future staff and future managers, they'll be free to amend this plan any way they want. There's no legal mechanism to prevent them from doing so. And the, or, in ORS 457, that's the governing statute that governs urban renewal. So, that, I, I, I miss, I think your intent is good. Had, had we done this earlier, that quick from the get-go, starting in 1968, had we, had we used urban renewal, okay, we're going to do one project, and sunset, and then start another project, raise the money, build that. It's, there's too much water under the bridge. I, I'm, I'm not impugning your, your motives here, I'm not, I'm not accusing you of being cynical. Some people might say that. Some people might, I don't say that. Well, trust, verify. I mean, this, this, this is, this is just a continuation. It's just going to go on forever. It's been, you know, it's, it's been 42 years.
You can only do what we can do.
It's been 42 years. We, that's, that's my first problem. I'll, I'll probably need one or two more rounds. There's, there's, there's nothing, absolutely nothing, to prevent future council from continuing this. My other problem is with basically number 2, 3, and 4, the, the suggested projects. There's eight different sites that are competing for the Beth's Clinic, including in other towns. What, so our chances are about 1 in 8 of landing them. And I, I mentioned that at a previous meeting, it's, it's not really between us and the Beth's, it's between their landlord, because they're not going to buy the property, they just want to rent property, lease property. So, their landlord is going to be maybe Peace Health or somebody like that. We have nothing to do with that arrangement. We're not going to be receiving rents. They're, they're not our tenants. Now, can we help them if they need to remodel and some SDC relief or something like that? Of course we could. There's ways we can help them. There's, we got all kinds of ways we could help them and facilitate that. Urban renewal should not be one of them. This big vague plan that we never know when it will end. We don't even know how much it would, there's, they're just negotiating, no, they have no idea what, what the requirements are, or whether we'll even, whether we'll even be in Eugene. That's for starters. The same thing with LCC in a different way. I'll need another round.
Betty?
Okay. Urban renewal has been, councils have voted previously to terminate urban renewal at certain times. One of them since I've been on the council, and was, it's very easy to change that. It's easy to, if we never terminate it, it just keeps going, and it's easy to expand the, the area, to increase the debt limit, to change what you're, what you're doing it for. It is not, it is not the right way to, well, I, I don't know about all these things that are included anyway, but it's not the right way to fund it, and I think we need to look at other possibilities for, first decide whether we want to do these things that are in this particular motion, and then decide how we could fund it in a different way that doesn't take money away from other entities, and that doesn't cost money, special money to administer in addition to that. But I think it's, it's time to end it and take advantage of those so-called advantages that you get after, after you've had an urban renewal district. Supposedly, you do it for a limited amount of time, and then the value of the property within the district has increased, and you get the tax money from that increased value. And it all goes back to the, could go back to the general fund, back to schools, back to the county, back to LCC, which is also losing money from urban renewal. But I will be voting against this.
Okay. Alan?
Thank you all for including the number 6 and the parallel analysis of the levy and the geo-bonds. I think that's an important piece of information for us to look at as we move forward in terms of how we finance these projects. To the point of the termination of the, of the district, it's true. Future councils can change this at any time. So, what this really is, is really just stating an intent, and it's that we, but it does not have any certainty around it. So, it's kind of like saying, "We plan to terminate this unless we decide not to." But, so it does, but it does show some intent, but it doesn't really have much meaning, and it doesn't mean that the, the district would terminate. I like the idea of the community review panel on a annual basis, we do, with the road repair levy, regardless of how we do this, I think that's a good idea. And then, the, the other thing, and I'm going to maybe need a second round, but to me, the biggest issue, public safety issue in Eugene is, is property crime. And not to say that the downtown public safety issues aren't important, they certainly are. It's certainly the squeaky wheel right now. I wonder if we're not missing an opportunity here to address both of these issues, the downtown public safety issue and our, our property crime issue, which I hear much more about, and that we have, are putting here nine police staff dedicated to downtown, and solely dedicated to downtown. Seems like we're missing opportunity here, and that seems like quite a bit of police staff dedicated to downtown on top of what we already do downtown, without directing any of it towards property crime. And I, I propose an amendment to section 1I that says, "Broadway Garage is therefore freeing up funds for additional police officers downtown and for, and half for property crime." And so, I move that as an amendment.
Is there a second? There's no second. All right. So, now, we'll move on to Jennifer.
Yes, I have two questions. When is, I mean, I know this is in here somewhere, when is the district scheduled to sunset?
Twenty-five.
Twenty twenty-five?
Twenty-four, sorry.
And is it possible that the proposal you bring back could result in an earlier termination?
Yes, looks likely.
Okay. I'm kind of interested in that. And then, I'd like to call a question.
And would we call the question?
It requires a second, and then two, okay, so it's no discussion, it requires two-thirds of the council, so six councillors need to vote to close debate.
All right. Question has been called. All those in favor? One, two, three, four, five, in opposition. One, two, three, so it didn't get enough to, to get there. George?
Madam Mayor, I move to postpone the rest of this discussion until the February 17th work session.
You mean table?
Table, too.
This particular motion?
No, you actually mean postpone, because it's to a date certain.
Postpone the, the rest of the, the motions until the work session of the 17th.
Moved in second, did?
Not the one we're on, but the other ones.
All of them. Including the one we're on right now.
Okay. All those in, uh, Alan?
Why?
I have to leave, and it's a very important discussion we're having, and I feel that we should all be present to vote for.
I got, let's go.
I'm, on the 17th, I'll be attending by phone, but that limits my ability to attend it. Is there a date that, where I was, the next meeting?
My... Senator? Like on the 22nd? That's fine. Does that be acceptable? That's acceptable.
You're done.
We can do it on the 22nd.
22nd?
Thank you, George.
Okay. And moved in second, and to postpone the rest of the agenda today to the 22nd?
Mayor, just to clarify, the rest of this item, not this item, not council items.
Correct. All right. All those in favor? One, two, three, four, five, six, in opposition. Two, it passes.
Thank you.
Welcome. Well, got some of the job done, huh?
Two, three.
Madam, actually, for a second, see, I, I really appreciate the way this council's working together, and that what we were able to just do, I thought that was pretty great, so I just want to say thank you to my colleagues.
George?
So, basically, we're just not going to talk about number 1D until later, is that what we're doing?
No, 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 all.
Are we going to talk about 2, 3, and 4?
No.
You're now on to council.
Well, it's great. We, we were, okay, we were supposed to talk about this on August 10th, and we've delayed this for six months. Now, we're delaying it again. That's fine with me. Delay is good, because I oppose this. The longer, the longer it's delayed, the tighter we come up against election deadlines, because whatever plan amendment is developed, and I hope one is not developed, I want to see it sunset, and I think that's going to be much more beneficial for the city. It's going to be a great thing. It's a good thing. People are afraid of letting go of the urban renewal district. It's not. It's going to be marvelous. The general fund's going to get 850 grand a year. We're going to save a quarter of a million dollars on administrative expense. That 850 grand can be used for jail beds, it could be used for police, adding police officers, it could be used for anything we want to use it for, and it's every year. So, I, I, it's unfortunate, I think, that we're postponing the discussion, but it's good, because I oppose it, and, and you're going to make it really hard to, to get on the May ballot. In fact, I don't think it can get on the May ballot. I think the next ballot will be next November, because this will go to ballot. If we don't refer it, I know that this will be referred to ballot. And people will have to get 8,000 signatures a month, and the old divisions and the old animosities and dissensions will start again, divide our community, and if we want that to happen, so be it. I mean, I, I just, that's my worst fear, is that that's where it's going to go. And instead of using other tools to make things happen downtown, which we have plenty, it's too bad I won't get to talk about it today, that, that will get into another acrimonious political fight with LCC in the middle of it. I just hate to see that. Thank you.
Betty?
Yes, I second everything George just said, that it will be, probably be on the ballot next November, people will be working all summer on this, and it's not a good way to spend the summer. But I just want to point out, I don't want revenge, but I want to point out that when I ask ahead of time to have a vote postponed, because I'd be out of town, council chose to go ahead and vote.
All right. Andrea?
Thank you. Well, I just want to make a couple of comments. First of all, when did you say, Susan, that you did this, the renewal district would sunset, and that money would start going back into the community?
2024, under the current plan.
So, it's 2010, 2024, so 14 years from now, I will be...
Still be sitting.
Maybe I'll still be on this earth. Maybe I won't, but...
Still be in county.
No, I won't. I'm not going to say how old I'll be. But that's a long time away. And I think that there's a lot of work that needs to be done here. And I think that if the community becomes divided by it, statements like you just made, George, are the embers of which those fires start.
Okay, Chris.
Yeah. I would like to use the time between now and when we talk about it again to, you know, I can work with Alan, talk about maybe the property crime piece. Maybe there's a way we can incorporate something in there. Because I do agree, property crime is important. And maybe there's a way we could talk about that or incorporate something in there. I appreciate and applaud your effort to try to find the middle ground and to get us out of the Urban Renewal district on a reasonable timeline. I mean, I believe you're sincere in saying you want to terminate the Urban Renewal district as soon as you reasonably can, but use it in the interim for what good you can use it before we terminate it. I believe you're sincere about it. I can't agonize over what future councils will do, because more knows a future council could pass a resolution...
Because this whole...
Yeah, right. I mean, they can pass any kind of resolution. I have no control over that. Just as past councils probably agonize over what we're doing right now. But nevertheless, I can only just work within the bubble that I'm in right now and hope for the best. But I don't want discussions to become acrimonious, and I don't want them to divide the community. I want to have good discussions about them and try to get to good places on them. And so I look forward between now and the next discussion to figure out a way we can continue this discussion in a positive and productive way. And I don't necessarily believe the Urban Renewal district has to continue. I mean, I'm hearing a lot of sentiment that it does need to come to an end. It's not the if, it's the how and the when, and how that circumstance happens. And so I want to operate from that standpoint.
Just make a couple of comments. And Alan has a comment. And then we may have a couple of seconds left for the last item. But the point here to me is that we have some heavy lifting that needs to be done for the community and that we've gone out and had a discussion in the community about what people would like to support and like to see happen. And then we... And so this is really about, do you want LCC downtown? Do you want some of these public safety strategies put in place? Do you want some of these social service strategies put in place? All of these things, we've been out and asked the community. And so taking that information we got from the community, we tried to put together the list that we think is in line with what the community would like to have happen. And then we've tried to look at tools for how to pay for those things. This is really about what we're trying to accomplish, not about the tools. Now, it's possible that when City Manager brings back information, we may find that another tool could be as appropriate. And you'll get a chance to look at that. But I think trying to light a fire over which tool we may use doesn't seem like a very productive thing. What we're trying to do is find a way to accomplish some goals, long-term goals that people want to accomplish for the community. I think we need to keep our eyes on what we're trying to accomplish and try to find a way to get there. And we should try to find a way to get there together as best we can and be respectful of each other in the process. And I think that this LCC thing is a really big opportunity for us. And we have a lot of good things out in front of us to be aiming for together. So I hope we'll keep our eyes on the positive possibilities that are out there and try to find the best way to get there for the community, because that's what this is really all about. We're going to move from this part of the agenda, and we have just about 10 minutes left.
Mayor?
Yes.
I was in the queue.
Oh, sorry. Alan, go ahead.
Sorry. I wanted to say that I like the projects that are here. I think they're good for the community. And I think they're good for downtown. And I'm eager to see downtown move along. And if we can help that by doing more public safety things, doing the LCC development, encouraging a VA hospital downtown, then I'm for that. If we are pursuing a funding mechanism that blows that all up, I think that's a shame, which is why I asked for this parallel analysis of looking at a different funding mechanism, mainly levies and GO bonds, to see if we cannot accomplish all of these good projects in a different way that can create more support for it than divisiveness. So I want to... I think we should seriously consider that and look at it. I think we also need to add a motion in here that talks about the downtown safety initiative and the overall cost of it. City Manager mentioned in passing that, you know, maybe we need to have a motion that says downtown safety initiative not to exceed what we're planning on with $2.1 million. That would be a healthy motion to bring back as well. And then the final part is, there's two parts that aren't incorporated in here that, besides the property crime part, that I hope we can work on. So there's three. The other two are a pocket park somewhere in here and also a discussion about a downtown public safety station. I think both of those should be incorporated into this. And I intend to work on that between now and the 22nd. So maybe there's ways to do that creatively, maybe adding a little bit to the LCC part so that we can ensure that there's a corner of it has a public safety station in it or that there's a pocket park associated with that development, since it is that entire half-block, including the parking lot and the pit. So I think those things would actually add to this project list and enhance our downtown without adding a lot of cost.
Good idea. Thanks for that. Okay. Now, very quickly, anybody want to... We're going to go to items of interest. Eddie, you have anything you want to talk about?
Sure. We have 15 minutes.
I was trying to get to Springfield.
First, I wanted to congratulate the City Manager on deciding that the farmer's market and Saturday market no longer have to pay to lease the space. They use that. Actually, we should be paying them to be there, because they are the most stimulating things, aside from the Kiva, happening downtown. But that's... It's well worth the whatever money we forego. Actually, nobody would be down there without them on Saturdays. The workforce partnership, I'm just joining, and I'm very excited about it. I've had a tour. I had an orientation and a tour of their one-stop shop where they... Where people can look for work, get help inviting resumes, take classes, all sorts of things. And I think it was really a nice atmosphere and very helpful. And I look forward to working with those people. Which it includes the spouses of two people on the council, actually, on the executive committee. But the thing I'm concerned about is that the fees that we charge neighborhoods to make appeals of land use decisions. I was at the Southeast Neighbors Meeting, and they are very concerned about passing the hat and raising money to appeal a decision. And it seems to me that it should be free if people want to appeal, especially if it's a neighborhood. And I'd like some information about why we're doing that and why it's as much money as it is. That's it. Thank you.
Andrea?
Thank you, Mayor. I was going to pass, because I didn't really write anything out. But then I remembered I was at an exciting El Rapa meeting yesterday. So the good news is that the west side of Eugene, at Peterson Barn, actually, the city's been a very good partner with El Rapa, has put an air toxics monitor in that neighborhood. I've encouraged them to do a press release and to do an open house and to share, show everybody, once it's up and running, you know, how it's going to look. So I'm really excited about that. We also discussed, and I've really been pushing that board to work more collaboratively together. And I think I got through. And I'm hoping that they're going to find somebody to do a debate with us and perhaps do a listening circle, Bob Chadwickian type, because I think his... He's a little bit beyond our, what we can afford on El Rapa. So they're looking for some local folks. But I think the outcomes might be pretty similar, where, you know, people can sit down and everybody can just talk about their worst fears about each other. I think there's this real belief that folks on the board on El Rapa have visions about what each other's beliefs and values are. We've never had that conversation, and I really want to have it away from the decision-making table. So I'm really kind of inspired and hope that they... That we do that. And we'll probably be doing that over the summer.
Pass.
Alan?
Just three quick announcements. I was going to pass two, but... Walnut Station, there's a meeting tonight from 7:00 to 9:00 at the Laurelwood Golf Course Meeting Room. Talk about the Walnut Station and plans going around there in the Fairmont neighborhood. Tended the joint meeting of the Sustainability Commission and the Plan Commission. And I think that's a great idea to have our commissions meet, especially when they are overlapping things. That was a fascinating discussion. I had to unfortunately leave a little early. But a great conversation between those two commissions that have overlapped, but they didn't... They don't necessarily meet. And they're actually planning to do that on a regular basis, especially around ECL and MX, which were the two big topics yesterday, as well as the triple bottom line tool that the city's using, which hopefully we can get an update on. That was a fascinating part of it, too. And the Laurel Hill Valley Citizens Potluck is next Thursday, the 18th, at 6:30.
Thank you for that. Jennifer?
I'll pass.
Last night, I went to the CRB, that's the Civilian Review Board, their review of the tasing of the Chinese student. And I admire them so much. They... I just want to thank everybody in Eugene who was involved in creating the Police Auditor and the Civilian Review Board. Their analysis was deep. It was cogent. They all came at it from different points of view. They had a unanimous opinion. And they disagreed with the chief's adjudication. They thought that the officer did violate policy, that there was no credible threat presented. They did so respectfully. They did so, in some cases, regretfully. But it was unanimous. And they had a 4-3 vote to have the investigation reopened, because they felt that the investigation was not complete, that there were many questions that could have been asked, but were not asked, lines of inquiry that could have been pursued, but that weren't. What practical effect that will have? Probably not much. But really, I don't know that any new, you know, stunning new evidence or facts will come to light. But their review was very good. And whether you agree with their decision or not, it was calm. It was rational. I think they did a great job. I'm really proud of them. And I think we should be happy that we have this group in place. Tomorrow night, the Police Commission will not meet in this room. It's the road show. The Traveling Road Show starts, and we're going to be at Sheldon Community Center. That was one of Commissioner Byus. Juan Carlos's idea was to have the Traveling Road Show, kind of like the Antiques Run Show, but it was Police Commission going around in a different neighborhood.
He was on his hands, too.
Yeah. I think it's a great idea. I'm really looking forward to it. Thank you.
That checks off one of the items on mine. I had the opportunity to attend a Cali Neighborhood Association meeting on the 28th and wanted to say, they had elections. Want to say congratulations to all the new officers and specifically to Tanya, the new president. I had the opportunity to attend a Chambers Economic Forecast on the 3rd and sit next to the mayor. We had lots of fun. It wasn't as an optimistic presentation as I would have liked to have hoped. But certainly, I learned some things there that I think can be helpful with the joint-elected economic planning work that we're doing. And then lastly, I wanted to pass along and give voice to my sentiments of condolence to the family of Ed Ragazzino, who passed. I was not able to attend the ceremonies to honor him here this last week. But certainly, if anybody read the registered guard, you know his contributions to help making the Holt Center such a special place in our community. Now, I've already spoken with the City Manager about how we've gone through this process of naming things before, and we should have a policy around that. But I, for one, think that we ought to really consider naming some portion of the Holt Center in some way for Ed Ragazzino. I think you can fairly say that it's a house that Ed helped build. And I think we ought to honor him in that way.
Thank you for that. I just wanted to let you all know that I sent a letter to the Ragazzino family on our behalf and expressing our appreciation for his contributions to our community and our sympathy. Like George, I went to the CRB meeting last night. And I think that if you all had been there, you would have seen it functioning the way you envisioned it functioning. They were very, very thoughtful. And not at all... I did not think that they were agenda-laden at all. I thought they were a very diverse group of people with very diverse viewpoints. And they just walked through each item very carefully and put their opinions out there. And I do believe it means something. Because I believe that there were certainly... The chief, I'm sure God will get the report from that if he doesn't get to see it himself. And I'm sure that there are things from that that will help our police department. So I think there was a lot of really thoughtful commentary made. It can be very helpful. I also think that the Auditor and the CRB did a great job and really in line with the chief on some of the things we need to pursue to make our department better in terms of dealing with the warrantless entry issue and dealing with cultural competency and some of the other things that have emerged out of this whole discussion. So I don't know what the chief's response is going to be to what the CRB majority asked for. But I can say that I think through the whole process, a lot was learned that can help our community move forward. So I'm appreciative of that. Just for your amusement, on Friday evening, I'm going to be joining a panel at Cosmic Pizza with the head of the National Humanities Organization, former Congressman Leach, and President LaRiviere, and Mike Bellotti. Kind of a heavy group to be hanging out with and talking about the impact of sports in a community. So it'll be an interesting conversation. And then the other thing I wanted to say is that City Manager and I will be heading down to Roseburg on Friday. There is a national salute to vets. And we will go down to the Vets Hospital there and represent our community and go meet with some of the vets down there. So those are some of the things that are happening for us.